We can't, we can't continue yet.
At nine thirty-one, I will call this special emergency meeting of Franklin Township Board Trustees to order, and I would ask Mr. Fleishman, Trustee Fleishman, if he would please open Miss LaPrayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunities, Lord. As crazy as this world gets, as people shooting at other people, we just ask that you be with us and, Lord, thank you for keeping Mr. Trump safe from bullet titany. And, Lord, we ask that you be with this meeting in your name. Amen.
James?
Yes.
If you please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mazur, will you give us a roll call?
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Mazur at this time.
Thank you, Chairman. Last week, I spent a great deal of time talking with the county prosecutor regarding our situation with the fiscal officer. Basically, what it boils down to is the other issues that we have regarding the computer and the cellphone are not really germane to the responsibilities of the fiscal officer. They don't consider that an offense that needs to be looked at by the county prosecutor's office. Again, she's an elected official. And until, basically, what it does boil down to, until she will acknowledge that she is an absent fiscal officer, not performing her duties, she is to remain in her position as a fiscal officer. One thing, because I'm sure you're going to have a bunch of questions. One thing I'm going to commend staff here, particularly Robin and Nicole has helped out. Robin has taken the initiative that we still cut paper checks that need to be signed by the fiscal officer. What Robin is doing is contacting all our vendors, seeing if they will accept an ACH payment or a credit card payment. And she's been extremely successful there. So what we are moving towards is, to be honest, we will not need the fiscal officer to sign checks, that the operations in the township will continue, vendors will get paid. When the circumstance arises that we have to cut a check for an employee, I understand that's the exception. And I'm going to be very honest with the folks here. I'm only allowed to sign purchase orders of $10,000. And this is something that the board will have to discuss. There may be a possibility where we can keep purchase orders under $10,000 and continue the operations of the township. It may be a series of purchase orders. It may not be exactly how the Auditor of State would like it. But I don't think all these folks appreciate the fact that the situation we're in now, you can bring this township to a speech and hold. And I get it that any attorneys agree with me, not only versus Rigdon Johnson, but the county prosecutor, it's an antiquated system, it's an antiquated statute. And the fiscal officer is only bound by a very small amount of responsibilities in the statute. Anything outside that statute that we have issues with, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. So the prosecutor suggested again that we reach out to Lindsay, which we have tried twice. I understand today she's under the weather. But we do need to open a line of communication where, basically, we need to understand what is she going to do. So in a nutshell, that's where we are today.
Gentlemen, if you don't care, before we go any further, Mr. Mazur, can you read this into the record, please?
Yes, sir. This is the oath of office, and it states, "I, Lindsay Justice, do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and I will, in all respects, obey and comply with the resolutions, rules, and regulations set forth by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, and will faithfully discharge the duties of my office," with her signature, Lindsay Justice.
So with that being read, I think that tells you right there, it says, follow the resolutions. And we made a resolution that Ms. Justice could not come in this building. But she can continue to do her duties, which she swore to. I took this oath nine months ago, and I was serious about it when I took it. And what we're supposed to be doing is protecting this township and making things move forward. She is not. She is holding this township back. We are going to come to a standstill. All these hoops we're trying to jump through and everything, we're not going to get it done. We have got to get something done about this, and it has to happen sooner than later. We can't push the can down the street no more. She signed an oath. Listen to what it says. I read it all weekend long. I've had this and been going over it. And we have got to do something. I am willing to meet Ms. Justice at the fire station. If she's not comfortable coming to the police station, we've offered. I'll meet Ms. Justice for two, I'll open up a two-hour window on Wednesdays. It would probably have to be Friday, I thought about this, because we have our meetings on Thursdays. I will meet her between 11:00 and 1:00 on Fridays at the firehouse on Sullivan Avenue. She can come in, do her work, and I'll bring it back. But we've got to get this taken care of. I was hoping to be able to have the conversation with her in person, but we can't seem to get her in person. She came out of a meeting a couple of weeks ago and said she was going to have a statement for the people of the township. There's been no statement. You can write a statement, you can send something in. I just asked you to read something into the record. She could do the same thing. She doesn't care.
So, out of curiosity, with the prosecutor, what is his opinion or what is his stance on a letter, the affidavit being turned in against him? Are they even going to look at it? Based upon what you're telling us here?
Well, that will initially go through the county prosecutor, that will go through the Auditor of State, and then the Attorney General's office. What the Attorney General does with it after that, I don't know if it triples back down to the prosecutor's office or not.
Because it sounds like to me they're going to look at it just at the same decision that they just gave here. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try. I'm just curious of what their stance, we understand what they're saying is, I heard what you said, so I'll leave it at that rather than restate it. So the only thing we can do is move forward and see about getting the affidavit signed and sent in and start the procedures.
Can you reach out to Ms. Justice again and see if she is willing to meet at the firehouse on Sullivan Avenue? Or even the police station? Police station would be closer for both parties. But the firehouse on Sullivan, if she's not comfortable coming to this location?
By invitation, coming here.
Yeah.
If you're invited here, you're allowed to come here irregardless of what the resolution says.
Correct.
She's just not to work here and be on the property for no other reason.
And that would be an open invite to come in and do her work on those days. Are you sending this to her or talking to her, sir?
Well, my experience is it seems better to send it to her through.
Can you add one more thing on there before you put your pen away, please?
Absolutely.
I'd like that stuff cleaned out of that office, find out what she wants to do about it. If she doesn't give us an answer, then let's put it out in the storage unit or something. We have to conduct business in this office. We've had her stuff in here packed up, ready to go. If she doesn't care about it anymore, then to at least reach out. We tried to be civil about it and said she could come and get her personal effects.
Right.
They're packed up, ready to go, so we need to move it. Thank you. You have, looks like you have some more paperwork there for us. But before that, I will commend not only Robin and Nicole, but you on all the hard work you've put in the last few weeks, especially outside of your normal run of duties.
It's extremely time-consuming.
I understand.
And unfortunately, the residents of the township suffer. Because we can't address their needs when hours and hours are being spent with this one situation.
I can't, I can't express for the other two trustees, for me, it has not went unnoticed, the work you've put in on this, and they have put in for this.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
There is a resolution that gives our administrator $10,000 ceiling. I think we need to up that so in this time period that if there are situations that come up that vendors can be paid, money can be spent that keeps this township moving forward. So we would need to up that amount from $10,000. It's a 10, currently a 10, correct?
Let me double-check that too, John. I appreciate where you're going with the.
Because I think we just said it. I don't know if the ORC put a cap on that. But if you could check on that to see what the cap is on that. Because it doesn't make sense to break a vendor down twice. So let's just say they're at $17,000. So we end up sending, you know, $10,000 and then another, you know, another for seven, just to equal it. We need to be able to continue this township and be able to pay our vendors and keep things moving.
I'd be more than happy to entertain that and discuss that.
Ultimately, just so the residents know, we see the expenditures, irregardless if it's Mr. Mazur, we look at his expenditures just the same as we do the checks that we sit here and we sign and we go over.
Mr. Mazur gives, sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
No, no, you're good. It's just that I take very seriously when he sends me that agenda for the next meeting, and I think it's been proven in the meetings, I look on there and I ask questions. This is, I don't think, if we're allowed to raise him, I believe that's a good way to go because then he could, we could conduct more business without bothering the fiscal officer.
Because the one thing that we can't do is allow this township to incur more debt by fees that are associated by bills not being paid. We have seen that in the past. That was, I personally went around and did an affidavit with a past fiscal officer because of, we even had our phone shut off because the bill wasn't being paid. The money is there, the people's money is there in the bank, our budget is solid, and we can't access it or we can't pay things, let alone our payroll. You can imagine people that are working, what stress level has this caused not only on our administrator, our staff, but the employees wondering if they're going to get paid at the end of the week?
Another good one to go to what you're just saying, John, is the reason she had to break this down, the assistant is, or Steve's payroll specialist, is because she had people's money that needed to be paid to their municipalities.
Yeah.
And there are penalties if this doesn't occur. The taxpayers for Franklin Township are going to be assessed a penalty, and this is what she's causing us to do because she wasn't willing to come around and sign the checks.
Right.
And so this is just going to cost more money. I've been told, well, I thought you told me, if I'm wrong, correct me, that if she costs the township money, they'll go after her for the money, but you can't get blood out of a rock.
Right, right. So usually what happens in this situation is all of us are bonded. So the bonding agency will make the township pull, and they, as an agency, will go after Lindsay, not the township go after Lindsay.
Well, I'm just going to say I don't have a whole lot of faith in bonding companies.
Sure.
We've had enough dealing with them here.
Sure.
And they didn't pay off. They don't answer. They're a little bit like what we're finding out with the fiscal officer. They'll answer questions if they want to answer questions, or they don't answer questions, they don't communicate, and we just seem to let it go. So that's all I'll say on a bonding company.
But as you read this here, and she signed it and took the oath of office, which, from my understanding, you can't hold office unless you are sworn in to office. So she was sworn into office. And there's one point in here, Mr. Blevins, that you, that you, well, that Steve read, "resolution rules and regulations set forth by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township." That's us.
That's what I was trying to say, sir.
Yeah. So I'm just breaking it down where we're at with this. We have communicated that she's not being in the building, and the reason is because the hostile environment that she creates when she's here. Secondly, we have set up two different meetings, and she has not been here. The board has came together for a meeting, and she has no regard, and she has not shown up here. Thirdly, you go back and look at the meetings, which I know she watches these. She has been told from the day one that she could go to the fire station to do her work. She cannot be that interested in doing these services that she's sworn duty to hold. If there's no communications, MIA, missing in action, she has done nothing for three weeks now. One more week will be 30 days that she's been absentee and has not had one call, one conversation, other than, "I can't come here," or there's always an excuse, family emergency, got COVID, different things. So, of course, we're only being privy to this 15 minutes before this meeting. So disjustice by misjustice to this township and that of the residents.
I'd like to go back and speak on the point you were talking about with Steve real quick, James. Steve, I know that you did not get, there was times when I spoke to you last week and you were working on this, with this particular item, and you cannot have gotten other work done that needed to be done. There's just, you're one man. I know in a meeting I made light of it and said you need an extra hand, you need an extra arm. I understand you have staff that's helping you out and everything, but we are suffering. We are suffering, the people in the township are suffering because he is just running around taking care of this problem. We have to figure out a way to move past this, and we need to do it today. Whatever that is, we have to figure a way that this township can move forward beyond her holding us hostage.
Well, I don't know if we can get it done today. Well, Mr. Mazur has to look at the Ohio Revised Code on that. That brings me back to my point I was trying to make earlier before we got sidetracked. To explain to him that we get a, he breaks down a spreadsheet. Every PO he signs off on or check he signs off on, he makes a spreadsheet, and we have it wrote down line for line for line, and exactly what it is. And if we don't understand his explanation, we can ask. So it's not that we won't be checking, like Mike said, it won't be like we won't be checking his money. Actually, we get a little bigger breakdown, a cleaner breakdown from them than we do from fiscal. And that's just the way it's designed. It's nothing toward the circumstances, but I just wanted to state that. But I don't, going back, I don't believe we can get it settled today because he has to check the Ohio Revised Code. But we have a meeting on Thursday. If that all checks out, can you get us a resolution that we can?
And the amounts that you would need?
I have a feeling it's set at $10,000. But again, I'll probably get in trouble again for bringing this up publicly. But I think we can work around that, well, because we need to. We have services to the citizens that we have to operate, and we have department heads that are trying to do their job. And again, I don't know what the Auditor of State will say to me, but you know, it's the township's, it's for the township's benefit, particularly the residents. I say it all the time, got to keep the operations going.
We have to.
Now, one thing that I think we have fulfilled, that the prosecutor asked me, is have I made any attempts to contact Lindsay, preferably in writing, which we have twice now.
Certified, hopefully.
It's just the text messages, but there's a chain there. It's much like a paper trail. Plus, I did send a letter on inviting her to the meeting today through a text message. So I will be back on the prosecutor, with the prosecutor today. I'm sure she's tired of hearing from me. Okay, we have fulfilled this obligation. What next? I think what the prosecutor is saying, again, if I'm repeating myself, I apologize, we basically need something from Lindsay saying I'm absent. So I will be back to work on this today.
Can you, can you send her that letter, that we spelled out here, working at the firehouse, something else you put in there at the end, oh, cleaning out her office? Can you make sure she did that? And try to get us a response by Thursday? The, we have to put this to bed.
Another point. Here, Robin has diligently been paying our vendors by HCH, is it?
ACH.
H. AHC.
ACH.
ACH.
Yeah, ACH.
Why would a fiscal officer, with the issues that we had with checks being stolen, supposedly, who knows how that works, why we didn't do this, it's much safer a year ago? It's quicker, more efficient, streamlined.
Why wasn't it done five years ago?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's the same question.
Right. But with the security issues that we had with our accounts?
Recently, it should have been done.
That should have been the very next thing. The next question, sir, Mr. Mazur, where are we at with Clover? Is that taken care of?
We still do not have that resolved yet.
I just don't understand what the, well, obviously, that's something she has to take care of. But an ongoing situation like that, to your knowledge, has she made any contact or anything in the last three weeks with Clover?
From my understanding, no. No. Robin, again, is working, the trustees passed the resolution, authorizing her to take care of this account. And from my understanding, we still do not have a response from Clover saying, okay, Robin can sit and see the fiscal officer from the resolution passed by the trustees to resolve this Clover issue.
So again, Robin is not a subject to her or an employee to Lindsay Justice, is that correct?
Right.
So in other words, she can't say that, well, I had Robin working on it.
Can she speak for a second?
Not yet, okay. Yes. And one of the questions?
Yes, she can't say it, or yes, she cannot say it?
She cannot say that Robin is an employee of the fiscal office. If that answers?
Yes.
Yes, okay. One thing, too, that the prosecutor said, because I threw a couple options out. I said, can we appoint a deputy? And again, it goes back to, it's under the discretion of the fiscal officer. The fiscal officer is absent, which is a point I'm trying to stress. Are the trustees not able to appoint like an assistant or a deputy fiscal officer to keep the operations of the township moving forward? She asked, well, give me an example. I said, well, could Robin as a payroll specialist? And she said, no, because there may be a time that Robin has to sign a check. But in the past, we've had checks signed, whether it goes to the fiscal officer or whether it's Robin, that checks have been signed.
Right, we gave the authority.
I threw another option out. I said, can it be me? And she sent me this lengthy thing. It was an opinion by Thomas Ferguson back in 1977 that said, no, an administrator works basically directly through the trustees, and they cannot cross over to that fiscal world. So it all goes back to, is the fiscal officer absent or not?
Or don't Jeff will check?
Well, I didn't even, I didn't even go down that road because, and that's a great option, because even the chief, well, there may be a time where the chief of police has a check and he needs to sign it for his benefit.
So then that's Jeff will check because he gets paid, so he's not going to?
This is what I'm saying. Because the law is so antiquated and so so worded, so specifically regarding a fiscal officer, it's very difficult unless the fiscal officer wants to say, I'm incapacitated or absent. It's very hard to supersede an elected official, a fiscal officer, and in this case, her authority, her abilities.
Going, backing up, John was asking if she's able to, she's contacted Clover. Just for the record, is her phone on? Does she still have her phone, and is it on?
Yeah. Nicole, I'm sorry, you wanted to interject.
Yes.
Her phone, her phone is on emails. Does she have access to her emails through her phone?
I received a text from her asking that we turn her email back on?
Her email was never turned off. She just has to probably contact Red Group to get a password reset. But her phone, in order to recover the Apple ID, her phone, SIM, IMEI, was transferred to a different device, not in her possession, so that I could do that Apple ID recovery process.
Okay.
So technically, the physical device that she's holding does not have active service capability. But her email, her email's on, it's not deactivated or nothing. Her email's still, I haven't done anything with her email.
It just needs.
So does she have, does she have access to retrieve phone messages that come into the township when you press her extension?
I would imagine so. I've never checked, I've never used my voicemail in that manner.
Does she have a way to be able to just, to check those messages other than coming in?
I think that's a capability that the phone, I don't, that the phone system offers. Like if you call in, you can check your voicemail remotely, but I, but I don't know. I can, I can check with our phone guy, Jeff.
Can you forward your phones?
Yes.
I have it.
You can forward, you can forward your calls to your, your voicemails to your, to a different device. But I can ask Jeff if they have, like, do you know if you can remotely call in and check your voicemail?
You can, but they also go to your email, so if she has access to emails, she would get her voicemails.
And she does have, I, I, she does have her phone, and it is on. You just have to.
She has her physical device, but it does not have active service because her phone number was trans, her phone number and her SIM information was transferred to a different device. and her SIM information was transferred to a different device so that I could do the Apple ID recovery that you guys were made aware of.
Sure. How about Clover? Can you give us an update on Clover?
Um, from my knowledge, on the day that she was, I guess, restricted from coming here, on the day that everything came together, that day, she sent an email to Clover, um, questioning why Nick Dunn was still on the account and, and why insurance was added to the, to the credit card reader, um, and requested it to be removed. I don't know anything from there. I just know it was that day that she sent that email, it wasn't prior to.
But our understanding is the reason, and this might be a good question for Robin, I'm sorry if you don't know. But the whole reason that we're being charged for the insurance is because we didn't.
Because she, she failed to provide our insurance information to Clover in advance or throughout any of that period of time, to let them know that we do have our ins- insurance policy to cover it. So because of that lack of information provided to them, they added the insurance.
And this is, this has been months?
Months, yeah, it's months.
It's, what is, twenty-nine, thirty-five, twenty-one?
I believe it was like twenty-five hours a month. Yeah, 'cause I, I had this credit card reader. She told me when she ordered it, I've had it for at least six months, at minimum. So during that whole period of time, that information was never provided to them. And there were multiple mailed documents from them stating what needed to be done. That were on her desk, that I cleaned up.
Thank you.
This one. Um, her, her phone can be transferred back. Um, her phone number can be transferred back to her, um, to her physical device that she's holding. If that's what you guys wanted, I would just need her device to do that. Otherwise, she needs to turn the device back in.
So the biggest thing is this could have been worked out today had she been here to talk to the board?
Um, I, I don't know where you guys are at on it, but, um, can we, also in that letter you're gonna send to her, um, possibly if these, if these guys, I'm, I'm not making a decision here alone, but that way she has capabilities to get her phone. By turning it back on, you give her an invite to come down and see Nicole. Just have her phone turned back on.
Yeah, or she, yeah.
That way she can get her emails on the phone.
She can leave it at the station.
Yeah.
She can leave it over with Chief, she, and then she can do it.
Chief, would you be able to pick it up and bring it over?
So, I'm, I'm, we can be very accommodating, it's the lack of talking to us. We can, we can, we can sit here till we're blue in the face, but without hearing straight from her.
I agree.
There's nothing that we can do. Every time we make concessions and try to do something, well, that's, that's not good enough, it won't work.
Well, I'm not willing to make a concession on that because we're not being able to be assured that she's going to be the one using the phone, and I am not in the business of providing phone to other people. Especially that phone, that phone could have had information on it that was germane to this township, and we know for a fact other people had the phone. So I would be a no vote if it goes to a vote.
Yeah, you know what, Mr. Blevins said, that is a very, um, good point that you're making. The fact that she personally gave that phone to leave her possession and be using, someone else using that phone and at a different location, texting Lindsay from her work phone, conversations back and forth, it's not in her possession. Um, it is for the township purpose. It's a privilege to have the phone, not a necessity. We provide phones, computers, to, and a place to work. So her having a phone is a luxury, not a necessity.
Right. I, I, I can see that, right?
So, without us knowing, Mr. Blevins, without us sitting here, speaking to her, answering some of the hard questions, I, I concur with you. I am not going to hand a loaded gun over to a child. Because we don't know what's gonna happen with that. With the mistakes that we have seen that cost this township hundreds of thousands of dollars, we can't give her a loaded gun, basically. So, her not sitting here to answer some of these questions, um, we can provide her with a, a landline, we can provide her with a computer. She has the tools to do the job. You just have to come in and do it.
Let's state publicly too, that, uh, we are a board up here, and all communications could, should come to all three trustees.
Absolutely.
Not to just one trustee or to Mr. Mazur. Um, we are supposed to work in tandem. And so I would love for her to communicate to all three of us, um, with things like that. Um, and that's why I'm happy, I have no ill feelings towards Ms. Justice. We could sit in that firehouse, she could do her work, we can be totally silent, or we can speak to one another respectfully. Whatever she chooses to do, but let's move the four, let's move the township forward. Let's stop penalizing the taxpayers, and that's what's happening here. It's my opinion.
Even with the amount of workload that this board has, gave the okay, that we made concessions and moved things around. So all she has to do is come in and sign and leave, and she still gets thirty-three thousand dollars a year plus benefits for coming in ten minutes here, ten minutes there. The whole point that I'm getting at is she is not doing what she pledged she would do. She ran for office, asked the public to vote for her, they did. Should we wait another three years and, uh, two months, or three months, to replace her with someone else? I don't think so.
Well, I, I would love to get her in here to answer these tough questions, but a- a- as we have, can, as we have in the past, it, it just doesn't, it hasn't worked out yet. Can you send her that letter, check with the ORC? I think we just keep sitting here going back around, back around, back around, and, um.
We just keep trying to pin the, the tail on the donkey.
And then we'll have another report for the residents on Thursday. Hopefully, Ms. Justice can get back to you with the communications that you send her before Thursday. We have, we have the answer.
She's more than welcome to show up on Thursday.
Seats here.
Come on in?
Yeah.
We invite her to a meeting on Thursday. Well, i- i- if she has COVID, she may not be able to make it this Thursday.
I just wanted to extend the invitation.
Yep, no, so the invitation is to come to a, a meeting at any time.
And we will be more than willing to put her, um, and she can make her public statement to the public at any given time in any of our meetings.
Yep.
Address the.
All right, anything else, John? Steve, you need anything else from us?
No, I just, I appreciate you taking the time this morning to have this meeting, 'cause, um, there's a lot going on, and, and I actually think after having this meeting, we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. Um, and, you know, Jeff has been extremely cooperative. Um, I asked him to help, we have bank reconciliations that, that haven't been completed since May or June. Jeff has said he would help us with those. We have to prepare for the budget for twenty twenty-five. Jeff said he would be more than happy to help Robin and me, uh, establish a budget for twenty twenty-five. He'll present a, a letter, a new letter of engagement with the board to review adding these couple duties. Uh, so at least that will get us caught up with the bank reconciliations and get us moving into twenty twenty-five. And, uh, then we can cross that, that bridge when we get to it, once we get into twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, in lieu of this special meeting and the fact that the residents did come out for this, would you entertain taking any questions if they have any?
Real quick, 'cause I have a meeting, I have to be up to my regular job.
I'm just wondering if using certified mail might be a more
I have brought that, I have brought that up.
Yeah, I know, I heard you guys talking about it. It's like, you know what, that gives us a true chain because there, it has, it requires a signature to come back. And should that person not do that, hmm, you know what I'm saying?
Well, she's obviously getting the messages, 'cause she knew she was supposed to be here this morning, and she wrote back and said she had COVID. So we have proof that she got the message.
But it, you know, if it has her signature on it, then.
If she doesn't answer the door and doesn't, they're only gonna come to your house twice.
True.
You don't answer the door, you have to go to the post office and pick it up. If she doesn't answer the door, she isn't gonna go to the post office and pick it up.
Yeah.
And we're talking ten more days.
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
It was a thought.
Yeah, it's just like, we've got it. It's like, I wanna, it's like, okay, woman, knock this crap off. You're not ten, you know?
Anyone else?
I, I hate to say this, uh, I, I have two things real quick. Um, I, I do have everything almost together. It'll be ready Thursday.
Okay.
For the affidavits. Um, second, I mean, if she's failing to do her job, I mean, can't you just say, we're gonna go ahead and move forward as if she vacated her position?
That's, Brenda, that's kind of what we're trying to do now with the ACH payments. Uh, with, with, with the purchase orders. Um, basically what, what, and I think John and the other board members have said this, and I'll repeat it. We're just asking for ten minutes every two weeks. That's all we're asking.
Thirty maybe. Uh, not, not long.
And, and with the work that Robin is doing right now, you know, there could have been a stack of checks this high unsigned, that vendors are waiting for payment. So Robin has dwindled down to this, and she's still working on that. And granted, vendors, I think, would rather be paid electronically, 'cause they get it now.
Correct.
And the mail system is.
Yeah.
We're just gonna talk about the mail system.
So, you know, we are trying to just kind of skirt the whole thing. That's why Dan Jeff has been gracious enough to say, I'll, I'll get you through this year.
I wanna put two cents in with all the money that she has the control over. Yeah, as far as the checks paying this, paying that. If it was your money coming out of your pocket, what would you do? You would be right there in my face saying, hey, do your job, give me my money. Okay, the Marine Corps saying, and me is saying, or I'm gonna help you. Something's gotta be done. Thirty days is a long time.
And we're trustees, and we pay taxes too.
Yeah, right.
So I understand exactly what you're saying. I, I feel it on both ends. And I get paid for doing this job, and so I feel like it's, uh, uh, all three of us, it's not, I keep saying me. But it's all three of us, believe me. We have spent numerous calls back and forth, talking about things that you're allowed to just talk, you can't make a decision. We are doing everything we can do behind the scenes. We're doing it. We want to move this ball down the field. We want this to come to a resolution. An end.
Un- unfortunately, our hands are tied on a lot of things, as Mr. Mazur explained today.
Yeah, she's holding us hostage.
All right, if there's nothing else, I, I do have.
Just one real quick.
You're never quick. You just said, I got one, and now you got none.
You've already been done by now.
Hey, yeah.
Mazur is only allowed to spend ten thousand dollars. That's it, a lot of our vice code. Uh, and I was actually reading that this morning, 'cause I was trying to also think how you guys were thinking outside the box on how he could do it. And he's, he, he, he's gonna have to do it. If it's seventeen thousand dollars, it's gonna have to go out in two payments.
Well, we think, we think it has to, but we have to go through our legal panels, panels to make sure. We appreciate that. I don't think Mr. Willcheck, no, we're just, I'm answering the question. I don't think Mr. Willcheck can be the one, because he is an official, a fiscal officer.
No.
He is not.
But he gets a check, uh, he gets a check.
He gets a check.
Oh, okay.
Well, someone told me that he was a fifth.
He works, he works for us.
Okay, but I'm trying to say.
He's awesome.
You're looking at the options. That's exactly what, what we're doing.
Okay, let's live the media.
I understand, yeah.
The only way we could do that is find a, like CPA, and then, but then we still have to pay them too.
The cat hammer, I think, well, no.